But just before I do that and before we actually get into the nice parts of the program, I want to just give two spot prizes. The team has selected two exhibitors who've got beautiful exhibiting. You know, the best looking exhibition stands and you guys will get to see them outside is Do Impossibles and Debbie's Desby, Desib, Desib cakes. She'll correct us. Let's give them a round of applause, just a little something here. They're outside, they're exhibiting. Do Impossibles, where you at? Yeah, come, we've got something nice. We've got a nice stand there. You put in some effort. You could really see that you put in some effort in there. We've got a nice little something for you, sir, for putting in the effort. Now come in, your stand's looking good. Actually, come up, yeah, come up. Maybe I'll give you like thirty seconds each to just say what you do, but thirty seconds each. Okay, cool, go.
Okay, go, thank you very much. Tina, we are doing possibles. Basically, what we do, we focus on providing affordable VR solutions. For instance, now we've got an ecommerce website where people want to build their own things. They can go into our site. We also do installations where we can practically automate your whole house. There's a lot that we do. Also manufacturing, we are starting manufacturing as well, where we do like motion cameras, all of that stuff. So there's a lot. So if you want to know more about our company, just, yeah, you can just go out there and check us on the table there. Thanks.
Thank you. So just, you guys really put a good effort. No, 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 just, ah, no, star. Thank you so much for putting in the efforts. Your stand looks good. Thirty seconds, just tell us who you are, what you do.
Good day, everyone. I'm Desri Barnes, I'm based in King Williamstown. I'm a baker. My stand is possible in front when you come in the entrance. I supply customized cakes, cupcakes, balloon deco, everything. So if guys want to taste my cakes, lamingtons and crunchies, there's my table. Thank you so much.
Let's give them a round of applause. And there's an open invite if you wanna come and taste. Don't get in, then you form a queue. You take the first, the second, the third and the eighth taster. Just take one, you know, tease your tongue a little bit. Well, lalissis. But, but, but thank you so much to Tando. Thank you also so much to Deco for really driving that part of our program. But before we also, before we get into the networking and I take you guys through that. So what we've done with our amazing partners at NetBank is we had a couple of workshops before. So we've got, we had a workshop in Klavani before that. Klavani is a township out in the northwest. Before that, we had a workshop out in Teflop, Mangueing. It's a work, it's a, it's a community out in Limbo. And what we then kicked off and out of their generosity is we've seen the impact of small businesses that have been impacted by load shedding. I mean, a couple of months ago, we released the impact of load shedding on small businesses in the township economy, which, you know, which, which had a couple of indicators. But, you know, some of the indicator was that, you know, over sixty percent of small businesses have had to cut jobs, you know, and still the same pers, almost percentage number, you know, closed during load shedding. So they don't have alternative means and the, the cost of accessing load shed, sorry, the cost of accessing alternative power solutions becomes too expensive. So all we want is for the entrepreneurs that are here, the entrepreneurs that are watching online, if you've been affected by load shedding, just had, just engage us or tell us in a couple of short words, how have you been navigating this time? How have you, to sort of navigate this time with the little resources that you've had, that you, that you, that you, that you've had to master out with a little bit of ingenuity and creativity that you, that you've had? And in a month from now, the team is gonna pick a couple of businesses who would have won themselves a commercial generator or solar, sorry, solar inverter system to power up your business. Worth about fifty thousand, fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand. Worth about fifty thousand. Worth about, the important word is about. But, but this is open to you. So if you are here and all you need to do is just tweet your story. What has been your load shedding story and how have you navigated? But the big emphasis is how have you been navigating it? All of us navigate. Kona bava layo, kona ba, when it happens in this community, they drive down to the next one. Kona ba, you know, takes out the car battery to power up the lights from a mo duenyake. When the power's back, he puts the car battery inside. How have you been? Just tell your story as true and as authentic. And then they will pick their winner and will announce it and then see what's it, guessy. Shange guess, shange guess. But give yourselves a round of applause for getting to this part of the program. Now, we're gonna get into an interesting part, the part I really love. Not that I don't love all the others, but I love this one because this then includes every single person in the room. So it's what we call the networking. So what we're gonna do is over the next thirty minutes, first fifteen minutes, we're gonna network. And that's in the form of you standing, you know, talking. So for me, it's you came, some people came with friends, business partners, partner, romantic part, doesn't matter. But lose that person. Find someone, not, not lose them permanently, but, 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 but step away from that person that you came with for a couple of minutes and meet someone new. You know, it's just simple. You know, hi, who are they, who are you? Tell them who you are, just share notes and then move on to the next person. So let's try this out. Maybe get everyone to stand on their feet. So what I'm gonna do is, no, let's stand, let's stand, let's stand. We're gonna network now, but this is what I want us to do, right? For instance, if you're sitting on the benches like you are now, just turn around and face this handsome gentleman. Ladies, face the handsome gentleman and the beautiful lady there. If you're sitting on the straight benches there, well, not literally, but umtwa apa e workshopi ako. No, no, just turn around, pictures, look at each other. No, let's assemble first. No, 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 we assemble first. I want to see the assembly first. The moment you assemble, then we start. Whoa, we don't network. As what? I wanna see the assembly. I hope again now. Wait, wait, find your person, find, find. Wait, wait, let's find each other, let's find, we're almost there. Let's find each other, see, see, put, okay, okay. Now, this is what we're gonna do. I'm gonna count five, four, three, two, one, network. The moment I say change, I mean find someone new. When I say change again, find someone new. Let's go, five, four, three, two, one, network. Don't forget, tell them who you are, show them that beautiful smile. Tell them about your business, where you're doing it from. Ungasabi umtu, network, engage. Because the people that you really need to engage with are in this room. Please, please, just, yes. Share your numbers if they're comfortable, share your email address, whatever you're comfortable with. But just engage, man, meet people, new, meet new people, meet new people, meet new people. Let's continue to network. You've got two minutes to meet this first new person. And also, don't be the only one talking. Let's network, let's network, let's network. You can also network with the speakers, you can network with exhibitors, but let's network. Meet someone new, the bankers as well, let's network, let's network. Okay, find someone new, 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 find someone new. If you, if you still have not shared anything, that means that you're talking too much. Get the right ones and find someone new. Hello, Tepza? You need to do a switch over to it? Okay. First fifteen minutes, we network like this, next fifteen minutes, around. No, come on, come on, no, you went to, no, 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 you've got one more minute. Don't allow that person to be the only one talking. Now, I'm not the market. Yes, that's the market, yes. Meet new people, new people, people. Put it, get up. Let it be three people, four people, meet new people, share your business card. If you have one, share your email address, your number if you are comfortable, you know, your social media if you are comfortable. Show your business card, bankers, join in, join in. Join in, they mustn't come to you, join in. I need them, I need bankers in there, I need them on the floor. Meet new people, share with them what you do. Was I'm making overdraft, I'm making credit card, I'm making money. Just tell them, let's network, let's network, let's network. You've got thirty seconds before you find someone new. Find someone new, find someone new, we're changing now, we're changing. Find someone new, find someone new, find someone new, find someone new. It can't be the same person. Now, it can't be the same person. It can't be the same person, guys. You can't be on your phone, find someone new. Big Johnny, it's the same, find somebody playing with your phone. Find someone new, we're networking. There's a lady in a red dress here, she'd like to meet new people. Guys, ladies and gentlemen, bankers. Tell people who you are, what you do. Hashtag, join us for tea, together, bake a libeke, but in the all.
The youth are ready. The NYDA is a credible, capable activist development agency responsible for the plight of South Africa's youth and has been in action since 2009. The NYDA has been planting seeds of potential growth to mainstream youth issues into society and facilitate youth development with all society through integrity and honesty, excellence, respect and humility, professionalism, accessibility to all youth in diversity. We've come a long way, but our vision is so much bigger.
NYD is part of something called a bigger government, you know? And that anybody walking into NYD office, even if they may not be able to access an NYD product or service, we should be able to give them access to a government.
We do have a number of programs that we offer. Young people will come in. To go through our entrepreneurship training first so that we can guide them. So that when they get the money, they're able then to spend it effectively. And then what we fund is mainly the equipment, we fund material, we fund stock.
I received business management training from NYDA for five days. Basically, they were grooming me, how to open a business, how to run a business, how to deal with clients and how to make.
Hashtag, join us for tea. Thank you so much, sir. Hashtag, join us for tea. Ah, the same crowd? No, 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 guys, 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 find someone new, find someone new, find someone new. Guys, find someone new, you must move. Guys, you must move, you must move, you must move. You must move, you must move, find someone new. All of us came here for the same reason, to network. Let's network, let's network, let's network, let's network, yes, let's network. Ah, my sister at the back, next to the fire extinguisher, my brother, network, network up. Yes, yeah. Ay, 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 ay. Ay, 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 ay. Network, guys, come on, network, network. You'd like to network with me?
Thailand, so can it be? This is my clothes, guys.
Oh, sorry. So my host, do you live with this? Now you, you were able to bring all these entrepreneurs into this space, what's the outlook? There's no gain, a political gain for anyone, but it's for us. And we meet here, so is there a way that maybe you can be able just to allow that space? So that network becomes genuine.
To do what? To do, what do you want me to do?
Oh, what I, what I would like you to do, is to just say, guys, conversations in the corner, just for Wambasim Tansani to be able to.
So what I'll do, I don't, I don't think that's a problem. Okay, guys, now what I need you to do, guys, now what I need you to do is, it's beautiful that we're networking. Now let's network all the way to the exhibitors, check out the amazing exhibitors. The cake lady has got some tasters. Let's network our way to the exhibitors. Thank you so much to all the guys that have been buying from the exhibitors who bought the muffins, the cupcakes. Let's buy some other products, perfumes we've got there. And just to give you an idea of some of the exhibitors that we have, we've got Do Impossibles, which is artificial intelligence. We've got a confectionery out there. Cockolicious, we've got Debbie's cakes, we've got Kemi, Business Incubator, we've got Incentive Fine Fragrances, we've got Eesa Liplet, which is colic medicine. We've got Nova, which sells ginger juice. And then we've got Bafu and Busi Organic Farms. Guys, let's check out the exhibitors, let's check out the exhibitors. If you've networked out, check out the exhibitors or meet new people. Let's take them out to the exhibitors. Thank you, thank you, this looks good. I think on the bit and run. Just when you're networking, don't ask people for money. I don't ask people for money, I, 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 I. Let's network, let's network. What are you saying? Oh, you guys are eating her cupcakes? Oh, it's a good way to get people to network with you. Let's network. What is she saying? What are you saying? What does your company do?
I supply grass cutting, grass cutting.
She supplies grass cutting services? And she's a grass cutter? Let's give it up for the grass cutter. Let's give it up, let's give it up, let's give it up, let's network, let's network. I'm coming for the lady at the back who doesn't want to network with anyone, who just tells us what she actually does. Ma'am, I'm coming for you, this dude, the bad outfit, Desa, Desa. Tell us what you do. She does security industry, so she will protect you. Uh, then obkir and handcuffs. What do you do, my brother? Uzandi bamba. Wenzandon. Indoni, ntlele, look by indoni. This gentleman does social housing, so if you're looking for a house, talk to this gentleman. Commercial development. What do you do, my sister?
So basically, I'm the founder of TEDx M'Tanzani.
This is the founder of TEDx M'Tanzani. We've got gassy conversations here as well, let's give them some love. TEDx, how do we get on to, how do I get on to TEDx M'Tanzani?
So basically, we are in a foundational phase, we're still trying to build awareness and let people know that we actually have TED Talks that will be taking place in M'Tanzani. So at this point, we are available on our social media platforms so that people can be able to capture what's going to be taking place in terms of events and activities in order to build awareness and promote what you're trying to do. For now, we're not funded, but that we hope that, you know, with these kind of initiatives and, you know, the opportunities for networking, that will open up and also like just build awareness about who we are and what we're trying to build. The important thing for me is for us as people of M'Tanzani and people that are coming from local townships to be represented on global platforms. And that's what, that's what TEDx M'Tanzani is about, basically.
Let's give a round of applause. Woo, my goodness. Let's find out, you, you guys are on the red, you guys are on the green carpet right now. My brother, who are you? Just tell us who you are and what you do. You are live on TV, they can see you in China, they can see you in the UK, they can see you in Pretoria and Limbo. Tell us who you are.
Okay. My name is Unati Borolo Pistone, the Kulela API, Tansani, but I'm residing in Amalinda. Cold mix asphalt distribute.
So how do we get a hold of your cold mix asphalt distributor? How do we get in touch with you with areas, do you service?
Okay. Currently, offices are in Wuzoni, Abandwaya, so otherwise, my N卡 clients, no Maspala and government.
Okay. The lady who asked me to make sure that I tell everyone she doesn't work for NetBank, but she's one of the best dressed people, just tell us who you are, what you do.
My name is Binkie, I'm from Banako Holdings. This company is for catering, otherwise, the general is saying, hi, I got motivated. Thank you very much for inviting me.
Let's give it up for this amazing lady who showed up today. I've got Eesa in the house with us today. Just, sir, just tell us a bit, we just wanna get our frame right. You are live, people can see you. What is your product? Wenzandon?
Thank you, my name is Bandi Lefila, also known as Zutoktawabandwana. I'm a manufacturer of ears and liplet. It's a product that helps colic to kids.
How much is the product? And if I'm watching this, I'm in Limbo, I'm in Tembisa, I want to buy in the tanka, John.
It's very cheap, it's sixty rand and I also courier for sixty rand. You can simply contact me on WhatsApp, zero seven eight nine seven five three four six eight. Also, you can follow me on Facebook, Bandi Lefila.
Abandwana, look, I have a product, engine, engine, cost bonus up. Ninety, ninety, yes. How much is a year, Zaputi?
It's only sixty rand, my brother, sixty.
Yes, yes, it's only sixty.
Courier for sixty rand.
Oh, the year, Eesa is sixty rand. If you're watching this, just check them out on Facebook, on social media platforms. Eesa is sixty rand and they can courier it to you anywhere in the country for sixty bucks. Hundred and twenty, ah, come on, guys, come on, come on. I've got this beautiful lady here, this beautiful young lady, who's an entrepreneur. Young lady, just tell us, what do you, sorry, 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 sorry. What do you do? You know, we're streaming this live, you know, other people that are out there. What are you selling? How much is it? Is it only for Abandbasim Tansani or East London? Do you sell to other places?
Okay, good day, everyone. My name is Busi. I'm from Bafu in Busi Organic Farming. I do primary production and processing of whatever we are planting. On my hand, I've got a naturally made soap, which is organic, made of essential oils and it is handmade so that then there is creation of jobs because it is labor intensive. And then on this other side, I've got a body butter that is made of argan oil, cocoa butter, sheep butter and avocado butter, which is good for the skin. It's good for eczema, it's good for neparesh and all the, those dark marks that you don't want in your body. And lastly, I've got a box of tea here that was developed by CSIR as a prototype for us, which is cancer bush, which is good for metabolism, good for bronchitis. And it is also infused with rosemary as a herb for those that are forgetful. Thank you so much. This box of tea, which is twenty tea bags, it's sixty rand. And the handmade soap, natural soap, is forty rand. And the body butter with argan oil is two hundred rand.
So, so if I, if I'm watching this and I'll maybe, how do I buy? How do I contact you?
I've got a Facebook page, so you can order there and then we can courier for you. Thank you.
Don't sleep on this opportunity. Check these amazing products. This is, thank you so much. I've got incentive here. Incentive, tell us, I mean, you know, your stuff is smelling good, you're looking good. What are, what is incentive?
Thank you so much. Incentive Fine Fragrances is a generic manufacturing company that manufactures generic fine fragrances. And also, we do lotions and other cosmetics products, lip care. We are now venturing into hair care and wellness products as well. But the highlight, it's the fragrances. We're actually involved in a project where a celebrity, a local celebrity, I'm not allowed to say, but in the boxing industry, we are manufacturing a fragrance, an original fragrance for that person. And it's going to get out in the news in about three months, I think, three months from now, it'll be announced. So we are proud to be a perfume manufacturing company, M'Tanzani, that does exceptionally well products that will, you know, combat the prices, that will give you good value for your money. You don't have to buy the designer scents that are being sold at high prices, one thousand, two thousand, five thousand rands for a single fragrance. You can get a generic one that smells as good, probably lasts longer and at a very cheap price. And remember, we, we're not paying overhead, we're not paying celebrity endorsements. So what I'd like you to do is go to YouTube, find a documentary called Oder. It's called the documentary, The Perfume Industry Doesn't Want You to Know About. That documentary explains everything when it comes to generic perfumes and the fact that these are not fake perfumes, these are smell alike fragrances, oils that are manufactured by the same companies that manufacture the designer scents. So on that, on that note, I'd also like to add, we, we manufacture these products and we sell them to resellers so that they can have their own businesses and share in the profits. We are combating Avon, Inuka, Atha Ford. These businesses that I'm talking about are businesses that are not of luxury origin. They are not from here, they are not ours, they're not made by us, you understand? So by buying from us, you are getting one hundred percent of your profit to you and you are supporting local and we are supporting people that want to.
So I'm watching this and I'm, so I'm watching this and I'm thinking, maybe there's someone out there thinking, I love the product because it actually smells good, I've scented some of them. I like the product, what, how do I see the different variations? How do I buy? Is it only for East London, guys? Can I buy online? Do you courier and how much is that?
We have a website, incentive.co.za, you can buy over there, we have a payment gateway. We have, we, we are exhibitors, there's a table outside, just outside. You buy a single thirty-five meals for one hundred and twenty bucks. But if you do want to start your own business, we sell ten units to you only for six hundred bucks. We do training, we have various packages for training, the lowest being one thousand two hundred rands. We train you to manufacture, we get you connected to our suppliers or we can manufacture for you and you can rebrand. Thank you so much.
Let's give it up for incentive. I've got this amazing lady here from Kemen, thank you so much, sir. Guys, support these amazing products, show them love. Like we said, if you're watching online, all you can simply do as well, you're already watching this video, just share it so that other people can come out and see what M'Tanzani has to offer. I've got this beautiful lady, Chairman, what is Chairman, what do you do? How much do you sell it for? How can people get in touch with you?
Okay. I'm Samantha from Kemen. So what we do is we do business incubation in the chemicals sector. So what we do, we train on how to manufacture detergents, we train on how to manufacture cosmetics as well. And then we provide mentorship and business development. And actually, we are an agent, we are under CDA. We are under SIDA and ECTC, which is, they are our local funders as well. So we have an office here in Forchex in Mzanzane. And then our head office is in Gauteng as well. And then we have another center that is in KZN. So that's basically what we do. So anyone that wants to join, they want to become a manufacturer, they want to become a small business, they come to us. We train them. Actually, Incentive is one of our clients. Super High Chin there. He was on stage. He's one of our clients as well.
So is this, is this open to? What are the requirements? Is it any age group? Is it? Maybe just give an idea of the requirements and where they can, you know, I think you've sort of mentioned the branch areas. But is it an online application that I need to follow? Number one. Number two, is it open to anyone or what are the requirements?
Actually, it's open to anyone that wants to start a business. So they can contact through our website, which is www.kemen.co.za. They will see our contact details for the Eastern Cape, right? And then the requirements, as long as we want a registered business. One. Number two, we want a business must be compliant with SARS. Then they must have a business account as well. Then we go to train them.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. There you have it, Kemen. Show them some love. Business incubator for small businesses that are within the chemical industries. Yeah, man, this is us. You know, we're in the township, talking to amazing businesses that are out there just manufacturing stuff. This lady, are you selling shoes or what do you do? You are live, by the way. People are watching this, this amazing lady. What do you do?
My name is Kamalam Dingse. I'm from Tana Mangesi. I'm a CEO of Kamanga Ese Fragrances. I manufacture and distribute i-perfumes.
Where are they? Okay, since you don't have them now, just give us an idea. Just give us an idea. How much are they? How do we buy? How can we get in touch with you?
Okay, in the corner of Facebook, the corner of WhatsApp. The naso es a 80 rand, the naso is a 150. It depends. We put it like funa, you're 955 mils. Yeah. And.
Thank you, guys. There you have it, guys. Let's continue networking for the next 10 minutes and then we continue with our program. I'll encourage you to find exhibitors. Stop asking people for money. Siswami. Sorry, sorry. That's an inside conversation. Guys, we've got our Twitter wall. Continue to tweet. Uangosha ne data. Come on, ne data. Ah, data, my data. So let's continue to hashtag. Hashtag. Hashtag join us for tea. Hashtag.
Join us for tea.
Hashtag together, lebeke, lebeke.
Together, lebeke, lebeke.
Lebeke, lebeke, lebeke. Beke, lebeke. Huh? No, 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 no. Okay, let's fix it. We've got this amazing lady here. We are live and this handsome gentleman here. So tell us who you are, what you do. We are live so that, so that the people know what your product is, what are you selling? How can they get in touch with you? My lean injani.
Okay. This is Yolanda from Mzanzane. I'm a grass cutter. Then, I won by competition. I'm cool, I'm a grass cutter. I'm a bandwa, I'm a grass cutter in the business. So I decided to take my competitors and be their supplier, meaning that I've turned my competitors into my customers. So I supply with all the grass cutting equipment, meaning that umachini, the grass cutters, the reiki, spare parts, grass cutting machines. I can assemble umachini. I can fix some of the problems. Umachini, just the minor ones. But then I want to learn how to fix umachini properly. And then.
I don't know what to say because at that rate, you might even have your own grass cutting equipment that are branded your way and there's nothing stopping you, right? But for someone who's out there, let's say there are other guys that are from Tanzania that are watching. How do they get in touch with you if they want you to be their supplier?
Okay, I am on Facebook. I'm the marketplace for Facebook. I do have flyers. I do have a business card and I can give out my number if you allow me to.
So what I'd like you to do, the marketplace, maybe if you put out the name that they must search and also whatever is email address, WhatsApp, whatever you can give it out.
Okay. My WhatsApp. And then. That's my WhatsApp. Yolanda Jani, 0829532741. Umachini, only good 2.8. That's very cheap.
Thank you, guys. There you have it, an amazing lady who's in the grass cutting space and also has elements of industrialist. Shout out to you, an amazing lady. Guys, we're here. Just for the next 10 minutes, we're gonna network, network, and then we will continue. Guys, we're here, just for the next ten minutes, we're gonna network, network, and then we will continue. Guys, let's get the program going. Ashes, please help. Dumazila, your team. Hope, let's get it going, let's get it going, let's get it going, let's get it going, guys. Let's bring people in, let's bring people in. Ashes, let's get everyone back in, sorry, let's get everyone back in to kick off, continue our program, please, 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 let's rock and roll. Guys, let's get on with our program. Did you guys enjoy the networking? Just one second.